Corleville City Council to order. It is February 11th, 2024. Could I please have the roll, or I'm sorry, 2025. Could I please have the roll call?
Knudsen.
Here.
Vogel Zhang.
Here.
Huen Peterson.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members except Councilmember Huen are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich. Could I get a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay, on to the next item. So I have a very special presentation to give this evening. I have an award here for Kurt Winneke. Kurt is the winner of the Volunteer Coach of the Year Award for his contributions to the Corleville Parks and Recreation Youth Sports Program. So I have a statement that I'd like to read, just a little bit of background information about this award and Kurt's contribution. So this is the sixth year the Volunteer Youth Coach of the Year Award is being presented. And the award came to be because the athletic staff at the Corleville Rec Center wanted to find a way to recognize those coaches that go above and beyond in the volunteer work that they do with the Corleville Parks and Recreation Sports Programs. To be selected for this award, coaches must first be nominated by a parent, coach, or Corleville staff member. All nominations are then reviewed by the Corleville Parks and Rec staff members. The award recipient is then selected based on the nominations they receive, number of sports programs they have coached, and letters of support. Our other coaches that were nominated for the 2024 Coach of the Year Awards and deserve to be recognized are Derek Schroder, Kylie Bradley, and Quinn Kurtz. And Kurt Winneke, our winner this evening, was nominated by Joshua Abdu. And Josh writes, "Coach Kurt coached our four-year-old daughter during the spring session. Kurt struck an excellent balance between instructing the kids to learn and improve at soccer while at the same time really helping them laugh, have fun, and enjoy themselves. Coach Kurt always came prepared with a variety of drills and exercises to implement, and the games were fun and got the kids engaged. Kurt would notice when some kids on the team were not engaged or comfortable and would go out of his way to include them and bring those kids up to speed. Coach Kurt made the kids laugh with his games, the favorite being a game in which he would make funny animal noises if the kids could successfully hit him with the soccer ball while moving. Coach Kurt did not take himself too seriously, and the kids really gravitated to him. Our daughter has had several youth sport coaches, but Coach Kurt is the one she still talks about." That's a really awesome endorsement there. That's really fantastic. So I want to just share a little bit more information about Coach Kurt. Kurt Winneke and his wife Stephanie moved back to the Corleville area 10 years ago when Kurt started working for CivCo Medical Solutions. They are now proud parents of three energetic boys. For the past four years, Kurt has been coaching youth sports, starting with Pee-wee soccer and basketball for his oldest, and now expanding these duties for the twins. When he's not coaching, he enjoys spending time with his family, often out on the water at Corleville Lake. From Coach Kurt, it is truly an honor to be recognized in this way. All right, so with that, I think do we have a staff member here from the Corleville Rec Center? Would you like to say just a few words at the mic, or?
We have more.
Okay, okay, good enough, good enough, all right. Well, with that, I would like to present this award to Coach Kurt Winneke. Would you like to come up here? And we get a photo? Yeah. Over here, yeah. Okay. Thank you, there you go, thank you very much. Woo! Okay, thank you very much, and I do just want to say we really appreciate the contributions of our volunteer coaches. It's such an important job, and our rec center programming would not be possible with all of your dedication and the time that you give to it. So thank you so much for all of your work with our, the kids of our community. Yeah, okay, excellent. I made a bit of a mess up here, I apologize. Let me find my things. All right, is this something I need? This is for the donor day? Okay, that's okay, no problem. All right. Good deal, we will move on then. So this evening, I have three proclamations to read, and the first one is for National Donor Day. Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts one human can give to another is the gift of life. And whereas through the generosity of one organ donor, up to eight lives can be saved, and the lives of 50 to 300 people can be saved or enhanced through tissue donation. And whereas thousands of lives have been transformed through the gift of organ and tissue donation thanks to the selflessness of donors and the unwavering support of their families. And whereas more than 104,000 men, women, and children are currently waiting for a life-saving organ transplant in the United States, including hundreds here in Iowa. And whereas living donation provides another powerful way to save lives, with kidney and liver transplants being the most common forms of living donations, allowing donors to continue living full, healthy lives. And whereas every Iowan has the opportunity to make a profound impact by registering as an organ and tissue donor, which can be done easily at the Iowa Department of Transportation or online through the Iowa Donor Registry. And whereas National Donor Day is a time to honor and celebrate the heroic donors, their families, healthcare professionals, recipients, and the countless individuals who advocate for the life-saving and life-enhancing impact of organ and tissue donation. Now therefore, Iowa Donor Network encourages all Iowans to take this opportunity to reflect on the importance of donation and to register their decision to save and heal lives, ensuring that everyone has the chance to leave a lasting legacy through the gift of organ and tissue donation. Signed on this 11th day of February 2025, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, and I believe we have some folks here to receive this proclamation. Would you like to step up to the microphone and say a few words about your organization?
I think we'd just like to say thank you all. We were overjoyed to hear that the city of Corleville was going to be proclaiming February 14th National Donor Day. Iowa Donor Network, we serve the whole state of Iowa with the mission to change lives through the gift of organ and tissue donation, and the vision that all are inspired to donate life. Proclamations like these are really important to the work that we do in inspiring Iowans and people in our own communities to give the gift of life and to say yes to donation. So thank you all so much. We are one step closer, we are very privileged to be a part of this larger community and to serve people in Corleville and across the state of Iowa, so thank you all so much.
Excellent, thank you. And would you like to get a photo? What I'm going to do actually, we have a, will you put this on a? Yeah, okay. So we have a copy here that will get put into the other format for you. But we can take a photo with this one? All right, thank you, thank you so much. Yes, and we'll get you this other copy.
Thank you so much.
Mayor Foster?
Yes. Yeah, say some words.
I would love to say a couple of words, you guys. This means a lot to me personally. My wife has been a recipient of, from a donor. They told us we'd never have kids, but because of a donor, I've got to enjoy a longer life with my wife and raise two beautiful kids in the city of Corleville. So I am definitely a donor, so I encourage anybody to do it. It is life-changing. So thank you so much for your guys' work and what you do.
Thank you so much for sharing that. Those are the types of stories that we want to share, to really show the impact of organ and tissue donation. It truly is a gift, and it has a ripple effect to really impact so many people when someone says yes to donation, so yeah, thank you so much for sharing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. All right. Okay, my next proclamation for the evening is for American Heart Month. Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts a human can give, I think, is this? I think we have a bit of a mix-up, I apologize. Because this is the same one. That's okay. You know what? Do we have it on my computer?
No, I'll get it. Well, you might have it in your emails.
Yeah, if I have it in my email, I can read it. Let me take a look. Thank you all for being patient while we get some things sorted out. I guess it's a little bit of a, bit of a messy evening this evening. It happens.
Do I have with Black History Month otherwise?
Oh yeah, thank you, that is a good idea. How about I do that? Excellent. Shift gears, and I will read the other proclamation that is on our agenda this evening. I'll skip to the Black History Month proclamation. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Black Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the city of Corleville continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas the city of Corleville is proud to honor the history and contributions of Black Americans in our community's 151-year history, as well as throughout our state and our nation. Now therefore, in recognition of Black History Month, past and present, in our community, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the city of Corleville, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month and encourage all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Signed on this 11th day of February 2025, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay. And we don't, I don't believe we have anyone here to accept this one this evening, so we will put that one on file. Thank you very much. Okay, and now we have the correct proclamation. Again, thank you everyone while we got that all sorted out. Okay. American Heart Month. Whereas 436,000 sudden cardiac arrests occur annually in the United States, with 90% of them being fatal. And whereas sudden cardiac arrests affect people of all ages. And whereas CPR and public access to FIB, to FIBL, de, de FIBL. I'm not having a good night, I apologize. DFib programs benefit all members of the community by empowering people to help people. And whereas Johnson County is designated as a heart-safe community, a program designed to promote survival from sudden out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. And whereas a heart-safe community is focused upon strengthening the chain of survival in communities to improve their system for preventing sudden cardiac arrests from becoming irreversible death. And whereas the key to improving the 10% national survival rate is education, bystander CPR, and wider distribution of AEDs. And whereas the countywide campaign was inspired by pioneering resuscitation and DFib research by the American Heart Association leadership of the late Dr. Richard E. Kerber and the Rotary Kerber Heart Safe Community Campaign. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the city of Corleville, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as American Heart Month in Corleville, Iowa, and recognize the Rotary Kerber Heart Safe Community Campaign and urge residents to learn more about the campaign at iowaheartsafe.org. Signed on this 11th day of February 2025, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, and Fiona, would you like to come and say a few words at the mic?
I'm gonna let Dr. Jim Merchant start, and then I will hop in right after.
Okay. Sounds great.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Megan, and I just, I'm Jim Merchant. I'm the chairperson of the Rotary Kerber Heart Safe Community Campaign. I'd just like to thank, recognize, and thank Corleville. Six years ago, we met with Kelly and Mayor John Lundell, then Mayor John Lundell, about starting this campaign. So Corleville as a early partner, as the first of our communities really to buy into this, we thank, thank you a great deal, and thank you very much for the proclamation. Kelly has invited us to come back on the 25th for a presentation, so you'll hear more about the campaign. And our my partner, our partner, Johnson County Ambulance Service, Fiona Johnson, wants to say a couple of words.
Fiona.
Hello, everybody. Fiona Johnson, I'm the Director of Johnson County Ambulance Service. Thank you for having us here tonight. Super excited to be a part of this wonderful proclamation. American Heart Month is super important for us to recognize because it really shines, like, the spotlight on sudden cardiac arrest death, the importance of bystander CPR and AED use. So I've been part of Johnson County Ambulance for the last 25 years. I'm very proud of our ambulance service and our amazing first responder network. We work with Chief Nicholson in the back, and we just have a really wonderful network. However, we can't get to these emergencies fast enough. Sudden cardiac arrest is a time-critical emergency, and as you said in the proclamation, a person's chance of survival decreases by 10% with every minute that goes by when no CPR or AED is used. So if a first responder and an ambulance can't arrive on scene within five minutes, that means a person's chance of survival decreases by 50% if nobody does anything. And so that's why we are turning to our communities and asking for help. We need help. We need our community members to recognize when an emergency occurs, to activate 911, to start CPR, and it's okay if you don't know CPR. Our dispatchers are trained in providing that instruction. And then to use an AED. Those are the steps that have to be intact. Those pieces of the chain of survival have to be intact in order to improve survival statistics in Johnson County. And so we're asking everybody to help, to learn hands-only CPR. We're gonna have hands-only CPR instruction from 12 to 1 every day, Monday through Friday, for the last two weeks of February over at the ambulance service. So 808 South Dubuque Street, I'll be doing the hands-only CPR instruction, providing AED use instruction. So we really encourage people to come out and learn that life-saving training, and then also to download Pulse Point, which is a free-to-download app that will alert users as to when somebody in your vicinity needs CPR. So those things can really actually save lives, and I thank you so much for inviting us here to be part of this. Thank you so much, Rich.
All right, thank you. And I do just want to note that I do have the Pulse Point app downloaded on my phone, so.
Thank you.
Really would encourage folks to do that.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, let's get a photo. All right, thank you both, thank you, great.
I would like to just add two cents. I can't support this program enough. It's tremendously important for our community. To echo Fiona, I wish everybody would take the time to learn CPR. It's a great thing to do, and it's a great program, and I thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Excellent. Okay. Next item on our agenda is community comments. And this is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time as well as the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So do we have anybody that would like to speak to us? Yes, please come and step up to the microphone and share your name.
Okay. Well, hello, Madam Mayor and Corleville City Council members. My name is Katie Freeman. I am a resident of Corleville. I am a spouse, a parent, and currently a graduate student at the University of Iowa. I also happen to be transgender. For the last three weeks, transgender, non-binary, and gender-queer Iowans and those who love them have been under a daily attack against the acknowledgement of our existence, our right to safe health care, our right to work, have housing, and financial services, our ability to serve in the military, our right to be called by our name, our right to have our correct pronouns used and respected, the acknowledgement of our murders as hate crimes, our right to get an education free from bullying, our right to change state and federal documentation to match our correct name and gender, our art forms declaring drag as obscene, our right and joy to play sports, our right to be educated in our history, our right to even be mentioned in an educational space, our right to safely be able to use public restrooms. On November 13th, 2007, ordinance number 2007-1017 was passed and approved by the Corleville City Council. This is the Human Rights Ordinance for the city of Corleville. The stated purpose of this ordinance is to protect the people of Corleville from discrimination on the basis of age, color, creed, disability, gender identity, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. Employment, public accommodation, education, and housing are all protected from discrimination through this ordinance. It is worth noting that as of today, these protections also still exist in the Iowa Civil Rights Act, as well as under the U.S. Constitution. The attacks stated above come from presidential executive orders as well as bills introduced in the Iowa legislature thus far. These attacks are, yes, against state and federal protections. They are also against the Corleville Human Rights Ordinance. I am here as a Corleville city resident to ask you, my elected officials, how are you protecting my community from this onslaught of attacks from our federal and state government? Before you answer, I want to let you know that sympathizing, that saying you really feel for the community or saying you understand how horrible this must feel does not protect me and my family or my community. Your sympathy does not stop hateful slurs being shouted at me and my family. Your sympathy will not protect me from the threats of physical harm I have received on campus and within this community simply based on how I look and act. Sympathy is not action, it is the acknowledgement of inaction and lack of desire to do anything that may feel uncomfortable. What my community needs and deserves is for our elected officials to listen to our needs and work with us on solutions that are designed by us and for us. For members of the council that consider yourselves allies, I am asking that you fight your own discomfort through this time. Ask members of the trans and queer community what they truly need and how they are already being impacted. Sit with the answers you receive, and then reach out again to the community and work with us to generate real solutions that will have real positive impact. So I end by asking again, based on our own city Human Rights Ordinance, how are you protecting the Corleville trans population?
Thank you for those comments, thank you very, very much. Appreciate that. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak to us tonight? About anything? Anyone else want to step up to the mic? Thank you for those comments, I appreciate that very much. Okay. If there's no one else that would like to speak, we will move on to our next agenda item. Next agenda item is a public hearing for a disposal of property. As part of the settlement agreement, this, a part of a settlement agreement, the city of Corleville has agreed to convey property it acquired from the Ruth E. Rarick Trust back to the trust in order to facilitate the construction of the Forever Green Road and Jasper Avenue roundabout. And you may recall, at our last meeting, we did have an overview. There's a long history with this situation. Would encourage folks, if you're curious, to go and watch the video from the last meeting. So with that, I will open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this item? Okay, any written comments?
No written.
All right, I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the disposal of real property to the Ruth E. Rarick Trust. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Knudsen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions, comments, or discussion on this agenda item? Okay. Excellent. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have the third and final reading of an ordinance for Lot 1 and Outlet A, Veritas First Edition. And this amendment would change the 17 acres near the northwest corner of Jones Boulevard and Merchant Street to low-density residential. Could I have the ordinance read, please?
Ordinance number 2025-1001, an ordinance amending the Corleville Community Plan to reflect certain property generally known as Lot 1 and Outlet A, Veritas First Edition, Corleville, Iowa, to be designated as lower-density residential use in place of medium-density residential use. This ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any final questions or comments on this agenda item? All right. Could I have the roll call, please?
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. And our next agenda item, amending Chapter 165, the Corleville Zoning Code. These amendments to the Corleville Zoning Code are based on observed needs by the Community Development Director in consultation with various staff members. And we also went through these at our last meeting as well. There's a lengthy list that, and you can read those in our agenda packet also. So could I have the ordinance read, please?
Ordinance number 2025-1002, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Corleville as previously amended, making changes to one, Chapter 165, the Corleville Zoning Code. This ordinance introduced for second consideration by councilmember Peterson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Any comments or discussion on this agenda item?
There's a lot of exciting reading.
Yeah, yeah, yes indeed, for sure. Okay. All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Next item, we have Wells 16 Improvements. This project will construct a new Celerian drinking water well located south of Oakdale Boulevard and east of Timber Lane, and it will construct a new water, raw water main from Wells 16 West on Oakdale Boulevard and south on 12th Avenue to connect with the existing servicing for Wells 9 and 10. And we will start this agenda item with a bid report from our city engineer, Scott Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. On January 30th, we received.
Thank you, Mayor. On January 30th, we received four bids on the Well 16 Improvements project. The high bid was roughly 2.78 million. The low bid was 2,396,610 dollars. And that bid was from WRH Incorporated from south of Manah. The engineer's estimate was 2,320,000. So the low bid was just slightly over, just over 3% above the engineer's estimate. However, our consultant reviewed all the numbers and concurred that it was still a very good bid. And also mentioned that we concur with Veenstr and Kim as well that we are familiar with working with WRH Incorporated. They were involved with our last major water plant upgrade project and they are certainly capable of completing the Well 16 improvements. So I would recommend that we award the project to WRH Incorporated in the amount of 2,396,610 dollars. And that is pending notice of funding eligibility from the Iowa DNR.
Pending what? I'm sorry.
Pending funding eligibility from the Iowa DNR.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that overview. I will start with the first resolution.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the contract for the Well 16 improvements. Resolution introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments on this item?
Do you have a timetable for when this will start or how? I know you're waiting for the DNR.
Right. Once, once we get the approval, the clearance from the Iowa DNR, we will issue the notice to proceed. And then the contractor has 10 days to get started. But that, that can simply mean getting submittals and that kind of thing rolling. But yes, we will be moving as, as fast as possible. Our hope is still to have a functional well and raw water main by the end of this calendar year. The final completion date, though, is June 1st of 2026.
Any other questions? Okay. Could I have the roll call?
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And the next resolution. Could I have that one read, please?
Yes. Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for Well 16 improvements. Resolution introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Any questions or comments on this agenda item? Roll call.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And the next item, Well 16 Improvements, State Revolving Fund Loan. The city will finance the Well 16 improvements through a state revolving fund loan. And the public hearing for this will be on February 25th, 2025. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution to fix the date for public hearing on the proposal to enter into one or more water revenue loan agreements and to borrow money thereunder in an amount not to exceed 3,500,000 dollars. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Vogel Zhang, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Questions, comment, or discussion on this item?
Do we have money in reserves for this project at all? Is that, it seems like usually we have reserve money for projects like that.
We do have, because we raised, started raising the rates four years ago. So we do have cash in the account, but we also have several other water projects. And so it's easier just to fund this in total and then use that funds for other projects.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, 1503 Brown Deer Road Storm Sewer Outfall. This project corrected erosion issues near 1503 Brown Deer Road caused by storm water runoff. And the first part of this agenda item is an approval of a pay estimate for the project. I would entertain a motion to approve this pay estimate.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. All in favor, please say aye.
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 The pay estimate is approved. And on to the next resolution. Could I have that read, please?
Resolution accepting 1503 Brown Deer Road Storm Sewer Outfall as completed. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Peterson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Hooray. This has been a long process and I'm sure all the neighbors around there are very happy to have this completed. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Could I have the roll call, please?
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Engineering Services Agreement. This agreement will cover the design and certain construction-related services for the Heartland Drive and Commerce Drive Roundabout. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with McClure Engineering for the Heartland Drive and Commerce Drive Roundabout. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions or comments on this item?
Have we gotten approval of the funding for this roundabout yet? I thought that was still, it seems like we submitted the application not too long ago.
No, this is the one that we received.
We did receive this one. Great.
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And the next item, this project is an interior drainage model, will simulate stormwater runoff conveyance and ponding under different storm events to reflect changes in the development characteristics of the area and to reflect improvements made. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with Howard R. Green, Inc., for the Stormwater Pump Station Number 9 Interior Drainage Model. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have a 2080 Agreement for Alcohol Enforcement. The Iowa Department of Revenue will reimburse the Corleville Police Department with $100 per compliance check, compliance check at alcohol or any alcohol retail or retail locations. And this is not to exceed 20 compliance checks or $2,000. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving a 2080 Agreement with the Iowa Department of Revenue regarding alcohol enforcement. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Vogel Zhang, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments or discussion? All right. Roll call.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And finally, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
All of it?
We missed "hi." As presented.
As presented. Okay. Moved by Goodrich. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Could I have the roll call, please?
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. And finally, City Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just, first of all, just like to remind folks that next Monday is a holiday, President's Day. And so all city services, especially solid waste, will be one day delayed. So just remind people of that. And second, would just like to thank all the people that were involved over the last week in presenting many different activities around Corleville and supporting the state girls wrestling tournament, the state boys' duels tournament. Brought a lot of people to our community and we heard lots of very positive comments. And there was a lot of people involved in that and just appreciate the efforts of everyone. And there's a lot more to come over the next two to three weeks. So encourage people to watch for all the events that are upcoming.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Okay. Mayor's Report. I have a couple of quick things. So one of the first things that I wanted to note is that we do have some openings on our boards and commissions. So we have one opening on the Board of Adjustment and we have two openings on the Corleville Arts Commission. And can you remind me, what is the deadline for those?
The deadline is February 7th, 5 o'clock, Friday.
March 7th?
March 7th.
March 7th. That's okay. It's all right. March 7th at 5 o'clock. That is the deadline for those applications. So I would really encourage folks to, to turn their applications in if they are interested. It's a really great way to get involved with the community. The other thing that I wanted to note is that there is a housing rehab program available. I believe they're taking applications now. There is some information on our website about this. It's on the homepage of the website. And this is a program that is through Johnson County. And this program would provide funds for home repairs, including roof and gutter repair, doors, windows, siding, foundation repair, things like that. And this program is available to people who are at or below 80% of the area median income. So like I said, this is a program through the county. There's a lot more information on this that I did not cover. So I would encourage folks, if you're interested, to go to the website and look up the information about that program. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about was the urban hunting ordinance and just some reminders about that. I've actually heard a lot of feedback recently about hunters in the community. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the fact that we do have a bow hunting ordinance. And perhaps, Kevin, can you give some information on that?
Yeah. And you have to, you have to sign, Chief Nicholson, if I miss anything, make sure I chime in here. I believe you have to get a permit from the police. You have to tell them when you're going to be out and about so the police know. Or they, they have to attend an information session with the police.
Training session.
And there are certain areas in town where they can, they can bow hunt, but they, so they have to adhere to those standards and they have to get a permit to do that.
Proficiency exam as well.
So, so all, all those things there. I mean, they're not going to be hunting in, you know, neighborhoods and things like that. There's a lot of outlots and open spaces that are owned by the city or, or if they get permission from other, other people for that, they can do that too. But that's what, that's what the program is out there. So you could see hunters out there on some open spaces within the city limits. That's, during the season, that is allowed.
Okay. And when does the season end? Do we know?
It's closed already.
It's closed already. Okay. Oh, it's done. Okay. See, I don't know.
That's what, thanks.
Okay. So cool. And so just wanted to note that because I have heard some feedback from folks that have been, you know, maybe a little bit startled by seeing people in deer stands or, and I have heard some feedback from community members as well about the proximity to homes. And so there are rules around that too, that, is it 150 yards or feet? I don't remember.
So I, I believe something like that, but they, most of the areas are large, open spaces. They're not, so...
Yeah. So I think it might be good to just maybe get a reminder on the website about that. Because like I said, I, I've heard, I've heard a, a couple of folks mention that. And, and reminders for the hunters as well that we really need you to be mindful and be careful about, you know, folks walking around. I know that most hunters are responsible, but just everybody be aware. And it sounds like we don't have to worry about that.
No. And it's been a very successful program. And, and one of the successes is that they deer to auto accidents in Corleville since the program started has been, has been reduced greatly by, by this program. So that's one of the benefits of the program.
Awesome. Thank you for providing that information.
With, at no cost to the city, of course. Instead of, you know, hiring sharpshooters or something that would cost the city, this is a, this is a no cost to the city also.
Well, I will say that my nephew is a high school freshman and my family hunts, my brother-in-law hunts, my uncle hunts, my nephew. But my nephew is extremely curious about this and has asked me questions about it. So just a reminder of that. And just be careful, be respectful. And just a, like I said, a good reminder, because I've, I've heard about this from, from some folks. Okay. And that is all I have this evening. City Attorney's Report?
Well, as Kelly said, there's a lot of events going on at the arena. So this is one of the, this is the week you can see the Iowa Heartlanders who are playing tomorrow night and Friday and Saturday against the first-place team. And then, and then they will be on the road for a while to, to allow the arena to be used for other events. And then they'll be back later and more, more home games near the end of the season. So...
Thank you. Okay. Committee and council members report. Let's start down at this end with council member Goodrich.
Oh, boy. Okay. I have a few things. I want to thank those who were involved with Winterfest and helped with that last weekend. And there were some other things going on too, as already been mentioned. The Iowa City Greater Better Together 2030 had their annual awards event. And congratulations to John Cobble with, who received the Community Partner Award. He's with, his business is Business Radio Sales and Service Incorporated. And he has provided the radios, the communication for six rag rise. And also, you know, through storms and has just done a wonderful job over the years, always is there, faithful. He and his wife were at this event and really were honored with this award. They also are involved with Boy Scouts. And they said they had just fixed all their radios ready for the dance marathon at the university. And they do a lot in the community. So congratulations to the Cobbles on winning the Community Partner Award. The library had their sale. And I just want to read that little note that was sent to me. "Thank you, volunteers." We had approximately 750 patrons shopping at the sale and made just over $7,500. So it was another great sale. They just keep getting better and better. And thanks to Leann and our crew of volunteers who are doing such an outstanding job of sorting and organizing the sale. And that's at the Corleville Library. Thank you. And then also the airport, the CID Airport, Cedar Rapids, had their annual open house. And it was great to see their new facility that they've added on. And it will have, I'm sorry, I just have to pull this up too. I had to take notes here. The new facilities with an outdoor patio so that you can get a gate pass now and just go up and watch the planes, have a burger, or maybe see your loved one off on their plane. They've arranged so that you can have time there at the airport with the passengers. And also they have Aviation Hub that will be opening next fall. And that'll be with Coke College, will be the Flight School. And Kirkwood will have both the Aviation Maintenance School and the Air Traffic Control Program. So we have great things that are going on at the airport. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much for that overview. And yes, the airport is an extremely important thing to have for our region. And we're actually quite lucky to, to have one so close by. So glad to hear that the event went well. All right. Council Member Peterson?
I really don't have a whole lot again tonight. I'm still looking for my voice. So if anybody finds it, please let me know. It's been five weeks. So, but having said that, once again, in Iowa, they saved all the snow up towards the end of the season. So we're going to get it all tomorrow. So be ready and, and like, you know, be safe out there. Just remember when you're out there shoveling, take breaks. We talked about AEDs and heart issues tonight. And that's one of the, the things that happen the most when you're shoveling snow is stress on your heart. So be safe and take your time.
All right. Thank you for that. All right.
Could you pass me that placard?
Yes, absolutely. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I'm...
First of all, I'm, I'm very grateful for the Proclamations, Heart Month, and CPR. Very dear, no pun intended, but they're dear to my heart. And I appreciate the recognition, so, thank you. Lori and I had a, had a great experience this morning. I want to thank Lynn Knight for organizing and making arrangements. The Heritage Christian School brought their second grade class here. They went, had toured the police department, fire department, they came in here. They sat in our seats. Lori talked, talked a little bit about the form of government that we have here. They interacted, asked some questions. I basically kind of tried to give an overview of, starting from what it takes to build a house. I mean, you walk, they go down the street and they see neighbors have a, a house being built, what's involved? So I just kind of gave a little overview of, taking from a cornfield all the way through the process of, of actually, you know, building the house. But it was, it was great. It was, it's always great to see bright, shiny, innocent faces, you know, and they were all enthused and had some good questions. And, but anyway, I wanted to, and they also said that they actually have watched our council meetings, okay? And so I promised, they made this placard to thank the city council for all of our good work. So I promised that I would hold it up, and so that the second grade class at Heritage Christian School could see the placard that they made. So it was a great experience. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. I have actually been here when, when those students are visiting. It was, I don't remember when it was, it was a year ago or a year and a half ago, but, or a couple of years ago. And they are a really fun group of kids. Very full of enthusiasm, and yeah, a lot, a lot of really good questions that they have.
Did I miss anything, Lori?
Good job.
All right, thank you. Last but not least.
Oh, and by the way, they, I asked if they, any had been arrested at the police department.
Oh, wow. Hopefully not.
And?
No.
I hope not. Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to put a quick plug in for fundraiser for Houses Into Homes, a great organization. February 28th at Penn Seekers. 1 o'clock, I think it is, start to get your golf game ready for the spring. I know Roy says it's not coming for a while, but, but as March turns the corner, hopefully we can get brown deer open soon after that. That's all I have.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we have another item on our agenda for an executive session. And this executive session is to discuss strategy with council to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate. And this is necessary where premature disclosure would be reasonably expected to increase the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property pursuant to Section 21.5 J of the Code of Iowa. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Knutson, all in favor, say aye.
You have to have a roll call on that one.
A roll call, okay, thank you for that. Roll call.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will adjourn to an executive session, and we will reconvene after to adjourn the formal meeting.